Ms. Scott, shall we start with an extra five minutes or so? Or shall we call to order?
No, let's try if we can just give a couple of minutes.
Okay. So calling the order, calling the meeting of the order for Monday, October 20th, 2025's regular meeting of council at 5:02 for technical reasons. Before we go to approval of the agenda, we have a late item. I just called the, yeah. So that, I guess I can ask for a motion for the item that we're looking to add. Counselor Julik.
Make a motion to add public statement regarding emergency care to 9.1.
Do we have a second here? Counselor Norbury, thank you. Discussion. Nobody's seeing. Mayor Kalka, I'm not sure if you have the ability to give us a visual. Will you just talk if you need, if you need to say something?
I have no way to do visuals. So if I have an issue, I'll let you know that I'm opposed.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. All right. So motions, all in favor? Unanimous. So new item is 9.1, moving old 9.1 to 9.2, which is just the schedules. All right, thank you for that. So now approval of agenda. Recommendation that the October 20th, 2025 regular council meeting agenda be adopted as amended. Can I get a second here, please? Counselor Knoxanna, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Adoption of minutes, October 6th, 2025, regular meeting of council minutes. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury? Oh, yes.
Thank you, Chair Hoffman. That the October 6th, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes be approved as presented.
Second here. Counselor Knoxanna, thank you. Anything council wants to bring up? A seconded. Oh, all in favor? All right. Anything council wants to bring up? Staff? Okay. Guess that was the, the vote was the approval then. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Recommendation, please. Counselor Knoxanna, please.
That the items in the October 20th, 2025 consent agenda be moved for information.
Second here. Counselor Dusso, thank you. All in favor? Passed unanimously. Any items that council would like to bring up for discussion? All right. Consent agenda. On we go to bylaws. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Bertrand.
Thank you, Chair. 7.7, I'd like to call for discussion.
Okay. Second here. Counselor Norbury. Tumblr Ridge Museum Foundation. Go ahead, Ms...
All in favor.
Oh, yes, all in favor. Sorry. Counselor Bertrand, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just not really have a discussion. I just wanted to mention that this is a long time coming and I'm looking forward to seeing the finished product. I have been in during the process here and I know they've done a lot of really good work and I'm really looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you. Any other items for council? All right. We will go on to bylaws, 8.1. Permissive Tax Exemption Amendment, bylaw number 756, 2025. Report dated October 20th, 2025. Recommendations. Counselor Julik.
That council adopts the 2025 Permissive Tax Exemption Amendment bylaw number 756, 2025.
A second here, please. Counselor Knoxanna, all in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. All right. Counselor Julik, if you'd like to go ahead.
That council authorize the immediate release of the district's public statement in response to the October 14th, 2025 statement from Northern Health.
Counselor, we're on bylaws, 8.1. Oh, okay. Sorry, you're right. Moving on to 9.1. Thank you. Second here, please. Counselor Knoxanna, all in favor? Discussion first, thank you. My apologies. All right, Counselor Knoxanna, go ahead.
Thank you. I think this is a good letter drafted collaboratively between Dr. Helm and district staff. I think it's important that we release things like this to remain on top of the information coming out from Northern Health and also from us. So I'm in favor of releasing this immediately.
Thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Chair. This is absolutely needed. Anytime Northern Health releases a statement like this trying to highlight the things that they are doing for us, we need to also remind them what they've taken. Our focus right now is that we want our emergency room back and we need to stay laser focused on this. So I'd like to thank Dr. Helm for presenting this to us. Continuing that, this is what we are advocating for. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Bertrand.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for really putting this together for us. I definitely have been in favor of it. I was deeply distressed when I saw the Northern Health release statement as well. I'd like to also thank Dr. Helm for all that he's done advocating for us. This is really, really concerning.
Thank you. Seeing that they're...
I may miss your chair.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Counsel, sorry, Mayor Kalka.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I just want to make some comments. I want to thank staff, especially Ms. Scott there. She was up and stopped in at Fort St. John. And we were having a discussion about trying to get this as a late item on the agenda. So, you know, I think we need to give credit when it's due to staff when they're working, I mean, on time off to try and get this in front of council. So we're replying back to what Northern Health is trying to come out to within our residents and where, to me, they're making comments of what their opinion of what our residents was asking at the open house that was on the Sunday. And then they had another one on the Thursday. And I attended both and I don't think this is what our residents were talking about. I was there fairly, fairly all, well, the whole, the whole time, including the friendly rally that was hosted outside on the Sunday. This is not what, you know, I took away from what our residents were asking within our community. I asked these same notes probably for the last, I'll say probably a few weeks or three weeks, including at the EVCM asking where these notes were that they had taken to see what direction Northern Health was, was getting from our residents. Because unless council has a different view of what they heard at the open house that was held on the Sunday by Northern Health and then the Thursday, I know some elected officials were there unless their tables had different comments. Tables that sat up were these were not the comments that I'd heard from anybody that's seen those tables. It was about getting our ER, after-hours ER back open on the on-call system or whatever. So people felt safe within our community. Right now, I don't think people feel fully safe. I was first in Dawson Creek in the emerge there. I want to say that we had seven, seven residents from Tumblr Ridge in the Dawson Creek hospital when I arrived on Wednesday morning by ambulance. So to me, there's a concern. So, you know, I appreciate Dr. Helm. He's been working very hard on, you know, meeting with doctors and his colleagues and coming up and reading through statements that Northern Health have sent to us and we're trying to resend stuff back. But unless, I'm just curious if council got a different opinion at those meetings. When I read through Northern House posts, I was getting it on their social media, because I'm stuck in a hospital. But that's not what I heard from the residents, unless I'm delusional.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Chair. I would agree with Mayor Kalka. You know, they're under the what we've heard section, you know, September 7th. I mean, they must have been, you know, I think this is more a summary of the topics that they talked about. The issues were loud and clear. We want our emergency room back. We want access to emergency room care. I was also at the September 11th roundtable discussion and, you know, the topic at all of those, there was some good people that were specific about how do these conversations get our emergency room back? That was not reflected here. I would, I would agree with some of the things they're talking about. Like, yes, these are all important things for us, but the primary focus of all of these meetings have been with the intended purpose to bring back our emergency room. And I think they're just not including that. Again, like I said previously, they're trying to spin, spin this in a different light than, than what I believe is what actually happened. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Norbury. Counselor Knoxanna.
Thank you. I was also at both the September 4th and September 11th meetings. And I would agree, the 11th, the meeting on the 11th was a very controlled narrative. There was no answers for residents who had very specific concerns about us not having access to after-hours emergency care. This is a real concern, obviously. I was also in emerg in Dawson last week. And there was a ton of Tumblr Ridge residents there because we have no other option. It's an hour and 20 minutes away and you have to do that drive on that highway in this state. It's really unsafe. People are scared and none of that is being addressed in this. And a second ambulance isn't enough. And we've heard that repeatedly from the community. So for Northern Health, just to continue to push the same agenda is really disingenuous.
Thank you, Counselor Knoxanna. Counselor Julik.
I just wanted to say, I just, I felt that their statement was seriously misleading, particularly paragraph three of the first page, that they recognize there are some misconceptions and we want you to know that there's 24/7 emergency care in Tumblr Ridge. And to me, that's misleading. Yes, we have ambulances. Do we have 24-hour care? No. Everything I hear, if you, and nothing away from BCHS, they do an amazing job. They're limited on what they're licensed to do. And that continues to be a concern. And yes, hearing some stories about some well-known, people that are well-known in the community because they're, they're integral parts of our community, that we basically ran out of ambulances because we just had that many people that need to care. So I think for me, the, the real frustrating part is that their release was misleading. And so it's like they want to make it sound like, oh, no, things are all great there. And so I, that's why I'm super grateful that we are coming back with another public statement. So thanks again to staff and Dr. Helm for that. So thanks again to staff and Dr. Helm for that.
Thank you, Counselor Julik. I think you guys are just too nice. Like honestly, misleading is generous. That's not true. It's not available in Tumblr Ridge. It's available for Tumblr Ridge residents in Dawson. And they don't seem to want to acknowledge that that's a problem. And the residents, I have not heard one person say that this is good. This sounds fair. This works for me. I'm not worried about it. This is a high priority for us and it doesn't seem to be a high priority for Northern Health. And I appreciate Mr. Helm's, Dr. Helm, excuse me, expertise and willingness to take this on, but I'm getting the point of I, I'm not going to make a motion today, but I think we start to, we need to start putting some pressure on Northern Health with the timeline of, we need a positive reaction, not just a commitment to 24/7 emergency care availability, but also a timeline for implementation. And if they, if we're just going to be continuing getting releases like this that pretend that we have 24 coverage in Tumblr Ridge, that's not telling me that they're taking it seriously. So I am very much in favor of this motion. I am very appreciative of staff and Dr. Helm. I'm appreciative of our residents for showing up. I'm appreciative of our residents not giving up this. This, I think, is critical for the town in the long term and the longer we let it sit, I think the worse or the more normal it becomes. I don't want to go through a winter here where two ambulances and an actively snowing road is the only link for emergency care for us. And that's all I had on that one. Does anybody else have anything to say before we vote on the motion? All right. All in favor? Okay. Taking a step down. Schedules. All right. Anything that, any questions or anything to add? Counselor Julik?
Just want to point out, as Counselor Bertrand did in the consent agenda, the museum grand opening is on the 30th from 4 to 6.
Just a reminder, Let's Talk is scheduled for the 29th as well at 6:00 PM. Hoping for a good turnout again. And also on the 31st, our regular 6:00 PM Halloween bonfire. If you need to warm up your hands, it's a good spot. I've gone every year since we've been here. All right. Anything else?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Count, Mayor Kalka.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm just curious that we heard back from Northern Health, are they going to be joining the left talk?
Oh, sorry. I'll remember to push a button next time. Staff?
We have not heard back from Northern Health. We did hear back from the Ministry of Health. They sent the regrets because the House is sitting, they are unable to accept our invitation, but we have not yet heard back from Northern Health.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mayor? Take that as a no. All right. Since there's no motions on schedules, what do we got? Anything left? Notice of motion. Any notice of motions for council? And councilors' business. Counselor Julik, if you'd like to go first?
I'm good. The stuff is there in the package. If anybody has any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Knoxana, anything to add? Thank you for that. All right. Anybody else in council have anything they'd like to, to bring up from the last couple of weeks? I have bored faces, so I'm going to say we're good on that one. Question and answer period, staff? Anybody email?
No.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Norbury? Yes, I know.
Thank you, Chair. I'll move that the October 20th, 25, 2025 regular council meeting be adjourned.
Second here, please. Counselor Do So. Any discussion on the closing this time? No? All right. All in favor? All right. Unanimous. Thank you.